Number three, any citizen desire to be heard? I'm gonna turn my phone down. Here in nine, number four, consideration of possible action on proven minutes.
I have a motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Number five, consideration of possible action on appointing two members to the GPMVMS.
Mr. Chairman, I asked that we delay this to ask that it be publicized. Did we get any more applicants at all doing that?
I haven't received any, just the two that was wanting to be reappointed.
Well, in that case, I move that we reappoint those two if those two did apply.
Second.
What were the names, Troy?
That's Rodney Stewart and...
Kenny Miller?
Anderson.
Anderson. Yes.
All right, you got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Six, consideration of possible action on approving a resolution to enter corporate agreement with Circuit Engineering District Number Five.
Do you really want to do that again?
Well, I need to for this $13,000...
Yeah, me too, I guess we'll do it one more time.
Was that a motion, Marvin?
Yes, sir.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Number seven, consideration of possible action on a resolution determining official board member two, Circuit Engineering Number Five.
I nominate Monty Piercy for that once more.
One second. Oh, they just love me, don't they?
If I can interrupt for just a moment, we need to do the official board member, the first alternate and the second alternate.
You know, just, I mean, it'd be all three of us, just whoever can get to that day, pretty much.
So what I'm asking is, do you want to handle that in three separate motions, or do you want to do one motion that lays out the three positions?
Make it simple.
Make it easy. Let's just leave it like it was.
So if I remember correctly, that would be Monty Piercy as the official board member, Marvin Goodman was the first alternate, and Mike was the second alternate, am I correct in that?
That's how it was, yes.
That's the way it, yeah. So Marvin, is that your motion?
Yes, so, I guess so.
Okay. Mike, do you second that?
Why don't you second?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I abstain. You abstained, you're second.
Too late.
I can vote for myself.
Are you kidding me?
Sure you can.
I'm here. I like to combine...
Donut box, you know, I mean, it's the same kind of thing. I'm gonna combine eight and nine together if y'all don't have a problem with it, it's entering into an agreement with ACCO for workman's comp.
I need that signed.
This is for SIG and CIF, right?
True.
You're chairman. You gotta sign it.
For our workman's comp and our personal, our property and liability insurance. What's option A and what's option B?
These are the payment options that they allow on the ACCO CIF fund. The total payment for workman's comp is $195,863. If we take it in two payments, the bill goes to $201,738. We've been trying to make sure that we do the one payment to save the money.
Yeah.
So that would be option number one, which would be to pay in full in one payment on the workman's comp. On the property and liability, they've made a little change. We've been doing the two-payment option until last year, and then we went to the one on it. The property and liability bill is $224,717 for it. And again, they will split it as a two-payment option. If we do that, it increases the total cost by $2,700. That had not been the case before on the split on the P and L. We've paid it historically in two. If we opt to pay it in one, to save that $2,700, we just need to make sure that, or I will, we submit for temporary appropriation, that we submit for 100% of this bill so we can pull it from, and be able to pay it by the end of July.
I think we'll save the money that we can.
Sir.
I'll move that we approve both in options one and second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's for eight and nine.
Yes.
All right, give me just a second, because these, I'm gonna pass for signature. I've flagged all the different...
Just need two signatures, right?
Just two.
You got somewhere to leave?
Nah.
I'm just looking at this and, yeah, it's kind of long today. Thanks for the chair.
There you go.
You're up, it's one.
You blame him.
You're up.
I was noticing on the news this morning that you were looking for a gray or silver dog's ring. You know how many people I know besides me that drive one of those?
Well, but the thing is, we're only looking for one.
When he said he has one, so...
We've already excluded or included, I can't say. Still doing the investigation, so we can't comment.
FBI director.
You know who else has one, right?
My old wife, though.
It was impressive, too.
Interesting. We're in a hurry. He's got sweat on his dang shirt here. I can't believe he ain't up there with a donut box over there.
I'm just giving everybody else an opportunity before I take you.
That's a flirt, you're right.
No, you're gonna be there.
But that is... It's a reallocation. Ten will be consideration of possible action on approving application for distribution of 13,000 CED funds for Ford Field Road Asphalt project for District One.
Absolutely approve that.
Sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number eleven, consideration of possible action on approving application for distribution funds of 13,000 CED funds for purchase equipment for District Three.
Make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
What do you have, Troy?
Seventeen. Yeah, I want to buy a bat wing.
Good.
Twelve is consideration of possible action on 17-18 software licensing agreement with Landmark for the county assessor.
See, I didn't put pictures on that.
I didn't, I did some.
Well, it's because Carol likes to see pictures of the road, the condition of the road. I don't know why, that's not a requirement, but she wants more documentation.
Since that's made its all the way to that end, is there a motion for it?
I did. This is Airmark.
No, it's Landmark.
Landmark, Airmark, something.
Make a motion.
I've got a motion.
I'll second. This is the software used to track the oil field stuff and all of it.
No, actually, that is not. That is the regular software that does the assessing, not the oil field, that's not task. We did task already. This is the assessor's software, like we use Kelpro, she uses Landmark for...
All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. All right, Troy. Thirteen, consideration of possible action on approving resolution for F and M maintenance renewal lease agreements.
Now, after our talk earlier, I'm sad I didn't put those on all those separate action items instead of grouping them together.
Well, I'll group them together anyway. I'll move that we approve these lease agreements.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You're wrong. Yeah, your district.
Two. You know, that CED five, I'm glad we got you on the, back on that again, because I know several guys that's about to vote for you to be the chairman.
I was already wrong right there.
You can't, you cannot accept if you've got a majority of people that want you to do it. That'd be a negative there.
Lowden County's not too popular down here because...
You'll make them popular, you'll make us popular.
And the reason why we're not too popular down here is because they like taking taxpayers' money and paying for everybody's lunches out of it, and I vote against.
Which is a good reason for you to accept ownership. I think it's a great idea.
I do, too.
There you go. I'll bring the camera.
Hey, it's an open meeting, it's an open meeting.
I'll start going.
I'll get you the address and such.
Fourteen, consideration of possible action on approving 17-18 Amendment Number Six, operating agreement with Airmark. Yeah, they're gonna eat, don't they? I'm waiting for it to be approved, one second.
Hey, Damon, so Airmark also operate your...
Commissary?
Commissary.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do they get both?
Yes.
It's kind of an interesting dilemma.
Well, let's agree with it.
Yeah, I just, you know, if, it's easier to force the commissary, force them to go to the commissary camp to keep them a little bit hungry at dinner time, that's all I'm saying.
Excellent point.
Yes, sir.
Call them.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. What's fifteen, Troy, you want this to do with? Consideration of possible action on approving maintenance renewal agreement with VistaCom that cost picking share. So see, where the FCC can't regulate you anymore on that.
They're about to phone us.
All the way through, courses.
As long as they approve your item, right?
But he's so good at it.
Oh, really?
Did we approve that?
No, I need a motion.
I saw that we approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sixteen, consideration of possible action on proving right-of-way service agreement with Ford Field Service for Crescent Creek Bridge. I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Well, we got just yours.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's the way they set the form up, left up still be a... Forward action as it's an agreement.
Yeah, just one signature.
So I'll see there. They require a right-of-way for you?
Yeah. Finally got mine done. And the Beaver Creek project that we've worked on for about 55 years now is under construction.
Yay.
All right, I had a motion and a second, do we vote online?
Aye.
Seventeen is consideration of possible action on approving 17-18 renewal with lead online investigation system.
I move we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Eighteen, consideration of possible action on approving 17-18 agreement with Caliber Interact. What Caliber Interact should...
Yeah, I was afraid you were gonna ask me that. I'm gonna have to find that out.
Do you mind?
Let us Google it. Old man, the new guy, trying to figure out all this stuff.
You need some backup here, sir.
No, I told my secretary, I didn't need your help to handle it. Troy, if you'd like to...
Yeah.
That's always a go-to, right there.
There's also an item on there for the treasurer, for the same company, and what this is, is an online system that they are using for tracking people they're looking for. The treasurer's office uses it for tax warrant collection, and the sheriff's office uses it for...
Leads.
Finding the location.
They don't code, they just make, not...
It's just, well, I don't hold it.
I can handle it, y'all.
We did not have an answer.
I'd entertain a motion on eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nineteen, consideration of possible action on 17-18 agreement with Snyder Electric for critical power and peon system maintenance.
For the office?
Not asking.
Make a motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
They operate also that backup power generation system for you and all that. Yeah, it's mainly for our server room that houses all of our stuff, because it's temperature controlled, we got a company that has the, is bringing that to maintain it for us.
Twenty, consideration of possible action on proving 17-18 for security scan maintenance. I'm assuming this is in the hall?
Yes.
$1,980. So I'll make a motion. Marvin, move?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Where the heck are we?
Chickasaw Tele.
Consideration of possible action on approving 17-18 maintenance agreement with Chickasaw Tele, K Shaw.
What in the world is that for?
When is inmate phones...
On 21, New District. Yeah, that's a phone system. 22, some thousand, phone systems.
It only costs $4,637. I'll move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Twenty-two, consideration of possible action on 17-18 service agreement with R.K. Black. Put this on due at the top here. Is that right?
Looks like best area of them. I move we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Twenty-three, a 17-18 service agreement with Dan's Pets Control.
Ooh, Dan.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty-four, consideration of possible action on 18, 17-18 correction communication service agreement with City Hall.
I was incorrect, I'll correct myself. The Chickasaw was their maintenance on their phone system in her office, this is the inmate telephone.
Oh, okay. I'll move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. If the board don't handle a problem, I'll want them buying 25 through 29, it's also a health department on professional service contracts. Unless we see one we don't like, we'll kick it out, how's that?
I like it.
It works.
Each packet has three that need signing, so I flagged them all, but as you're flipping through...
I'll serve them on here. And I... Should I put them on? Should I put them on? Wait. Should I just make sure what's happening? I don't know what I need.
Yeah, I want to.
Five dollars for that. Just saying, it's a hearing that's sitting. If you want to read them, that'd be fantastic.
Just want to look at the costs.
Yeah. You know, this is 45 bucks an hour for nutrition. Five an hour. Good pay. Little bucks an hour.
Oh, oh, yeah, he's working on that. He came again yesterday because he changed his mind on what he was gonna do, he was gonna do something a little less invasive and put a few more lights, and it would actually light up the, that alleyway, kind of, because when we're here late at night or election night, that alley is dark and we usually park down there, so he could shine some of those little LED lights down that way. So he's working on that, and also the parking lot for striping the parking lot and power washing it.
And getting us a quote on, some upgrade on the election board. So where did you get it, just get it 10 and...
Okay, it may be on my email, I didn't look at my email this morning, so I'll send it to you.
So I'd entertain a motion for 29 through 29.
25 through 29. I'll sub move we approve all the services agreements.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thirty, consideration of possible action on approving 17-18 agreement with Caliber.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If the board don't mind, I'm gonna move this sealed bid opening up, Aaron says she has some places to go. Aaron's phone. Y'all have enough of that?
No.
None at all.
Go for it.
All right. Identify the item.
I wonder if I find it, I'll...
Thirty-three of them.
Thirty-three. I've got too many pages here. Open seal bid, 2018 for election board balance, consideration of possible action on worded bid.
Received two bids, Midwest Printing and Oil Printing.
Got things that could go in there. Aaron, you wanna look at them?
Sure.
While she's looking at them, let's go back to 31. Consideration of possible action on approving resolution disposing of the following equipment for the election board. Just gonna make the motion.
I'll second with an understanding of what we're doing to dis, how it's being disposed of.
Well, it's sitting in my office right now because I don't really know how to dispose of it. The one thing is a burster, it's obsolete, we used to use it to pull pages apart when we did registries. I don't know anyone in the county that probably doesn't do anything by printer now, so you're not having to pull pages apart. Is there anyone, any office that does anything like that? If they are doing that, they...
To my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Everybody can buy it and take it storage.
Yeah. And then the copier, we can't get parts for it anymore, we have a new copier, it's just been, it's not even usable. And the third thing was the, what was the third thing on there?
Filing cabinet.
The filing cabinet, it's broken, I mean, we put too many registrations in it and it broke and it's dangerous, so...
Bring it out to my metal pile.
Can, can we, I'm, you know, I don't know what else to do with them.
Well, you probably don't have a way of moving it. Can you send someone by a mic?
Yeah, okay, you can get it. I know the burster's in over here in this story.
Just send them to the office.
Could we just, I could just put whatever's at my office over there? I mean, I don't know what you want, it's up on the second floor here in the sixth story, the burster, being stored up there.
Okay.
So I think to answer your question, they're being junked.
They're, they're, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
I didn't even know what, if anyone would even use a burster, I don't, I mean, we bought it in 2002, this is, you know, 15 years ago, so...
Yeah, antique.
Okay.
Did we have a motion on that?
We did.
A motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty... Thirty-two. Are you ready on that?
Uh-huh.
All right, go ahead, take your time. Thirty-two, consideration of possible action on knowledge and receipt of amendment notice of intent to construct an infinity renewables on behalf of Newman Twin Project.
If you'll recall, we've had two of these come through, the... The, it's an FAA requirement for these wind projects that they sent the intent to construct. There was nothing the board had to do. We just did it as an acknowledgement that we received their notice. This is an amendment of the notice to intent that has come in. And for that same reason, there were required by the FAA to notify this board, so I've just listed it as an acknowledgement that it's been received.
I'll move that we acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
You want us to sign all this?
I don't even have it set, so, yeah, there's, there's no permitting or anything that this board has to do. The law just, on their side, said that they had to tell you they were doing this, so they told. It's all pretty much in District Three.
Have you, have you covered that way?
No, they, they call and talk all the time. You don't, you wanna read it?
But you don't want to.
Yeah. So we have a motion, second, we all voted. We're waiting on Aaron, we can go on to thirty-four and open seal bid. Twenty eighteen two for Rock Halling.
Four bids have been received. From Delisi, Papa, Brown Transportation and Stewart Stone.
You ready?
I'm ready. I, I would suggest that we go back to Royal. We were using Midwest, but Royal is, they're the same in the small ballots, but as you get to the larger ballots, Royal's not, is, is priced a lot better. So that would be my suggestion.
It's the lowest and best.
It would be the lowest and best, yes.
Okay. So I sub move we take their recommendation and approve.
Roll, roll.
Royal.
I'll second, roll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, okay, I'll send that to you. Can we be excused?
See you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna ask to have this put in a spreadsheet. While, while we're opening these and acknowledging that who did. I just like that, is there any way that we can try and figure out a way to get Rock hauled in to the county by the train car? I mean, goodness sakes, we could get a lot better deal. I mean, the, that quarry out of Davis, Oklahoma seems to be where everything comes from. And all the Delisi rock and everything else pretty much comes out of there. And I, what, what have we gotta do to get, well, I get a little better deal. I think we're paying a lot more money for rock than we could if we, if we could buy it in bulk.
I think if, if, if we did a whole train load, in other words, whatever it is, twelve or fourteen cars, I think we could do that, but there's several things. Number one, in my experience in Burlington, Sanofi, is that it really doesn't pay unless it goes at least three hundred miles. And it's not three hundred miles down there, in other words. Uh, that's one thing. The other thing is, where are they dumping? And then we have to rent that area until we get it moved down, so it's.
My, my point is that, is that they bring that stuff up in rail cars to this area anyway.
True.
And I'm kinda wondering why we can't talk to folks that have that done and say, hey, we would take two extra cars if we get, if it just seems to me.
Well, I checked into, I was busy with them on the phone, I had a spot in Maho where they could dump them all right for nothing. But Davis gonna charge more per ton than what I could have a truck in at that time, and that's been probably four years of use. But I have checked into it, they wanted more per ton than what the trucking companies do, you know?
Yeah. I really like that Catusa rock up there by Tulsa. I really like that rock. But it's like seven fifty a ton.
But there, there's a place in Maho, they got a sideline, you know, where they can park them and, and.
Well, there's also a place in Edmond, just, yeah, the same thing.
But Edmond, I mean, Maho will be better for me.
Well, there's a, Kendra, Kendra Doster has.
Yeah, I'm all with you on that. We can get them to dump it at both spots, yeah.
Over in Wilson, they have a dump too.
All right.
Shoot, they want fifteen. No good idea goes there punished around here, you know what I mean?
I mean, it's great, but I, I have checked into it, but it, it might be cheaper now, I don't know.
It just.
It sure don't hurt to check them once in a while.
Yeah, it does. It's been a couple of years since.
When I say do no action and get it on spreadsheet.
They'll be tabled and stuff.
Thank you. I am in roast and looking at asphalt products.
Thirty-five, open seal bid twenty eighteen three for asphalt products.
We've received bids from Atlas, Logan County Asphalt, Haskell Lemon Asphalt Producers, TJ Campbell and TNC Asphalt Materials.
TMSI didn't bid.
I don't have anything in here from them.
Damon, how's it going? Liking it over there?
Love it. It's quite a hotel you got, huh?
Best job I've ever had.
There you go. Quit having so much fun. It's supposed to work at this.
You gotta make work fun.
Then it's not work.
I'm gonna kinda take your time to go through these because I'm not wanting to cover money for the best for you. Oh, gosh, hope it went down. Whatever.
There you go.
I'm assuming Logan County Asphalt just bid, picked up maybe? They got hot mixes sixty, or hot mix type A sixty-two seventy-five.
Yeah, that's what they bid, is picked up at their plant. That's a, yeah, that sheet is being picked up. If they didn't spread her out, it's only delivered price, and that's way, way higher.
Now, B is sixty-three seventy-five, C is sixty-four fifty, coal patch is ninety-five, coal patch Saks is seven fifty.
Yeah, Atlas bid quite a bit lower than that, picked up at their place. As a matter of fact, I can have it delivered cheaper than Logan County Asphalt. And I, I'm gonna. We're, we're no longer gonna buy coal patch from Logan County Asphalt. They changed the recipe or something, it just doesn't set up right. It's like peanut butter. Blows out the holes.
Haskell Lemon picked up at the plant. Type A is forty-one, type B is forty-four fifty, type C is forty-four fifty. No bid on coal patch. Asphalt delivered to location.
Yep.
Zone one. Pretty bare mic.
Yeah, all right, zone one on District Three?
District one.
District one.
District one. Uh, District one, uh, zone one, uh, type A is forty-nine sixty, type B, this is campus. Type B is fifty-two sixty, C is fifty-four sixty. Milled asphalt thirty-nine sixty, crushed asphalt eighteen fifty-five. Haskell Lemon is forty-nine eighty on A, this is zone one. B is fifty-three thirty, C is fifty-three thirty. You wanna go through zone two?
No, that's because it's, the delivery charge is all a little change on that, right? So I've got Atlas, Atlas Products, District one, zone one. Type A is forty-seven forty-four. Type B fifty-two forty-four. And type C is fifty-three forty-four. Milled asphalt forty forty-four and crushed asphalt forty forty-four. Which I wouldn't be buying crushed asphalt for that price, but.
How about this crushed asphalt on? On Campbell's is eighteen ten. Missed picket? Oh, and it's, uh.
But delivered.
Delivered, I'm sorry, that's delivered. So crushed asphalt, no good.
Their type, type B, uh, I think what we've got with Haskell Lemons right now is right around that price. Can't remember exactly what. We, we had a purchase order, we, we, we were just dead for that.
I don't remember what the targeted price is.
Wanna put it in the spreadsheet?
That's why I made, I made attention to it.
I don't think it's changed all that much from last time.
Doesn't, listening, I don't think there's been any big changes.
Certainly hadn't been any big drops in prices.
Correct.
I'm ready to decide on my district, but if you wanna, on your, on spreadsheet, I'll take that too. So you wanna wait and just do them all at once?
I think it would make it a little easier. What I would propose, we come back with a special meeting on the twenty-first.
No worries.
How about I try to put these on for then?
That'd be great.
That'd be fun.
No worries. We're sure hoping to see some thirty-five dollar a ton asphalt on there.
Yeah, it's kinda my plan to stop right there. All righty, so no action. Thirty-six, open seal bid twenty eighteen four for gray cords.
We have two from Leo Hicks. That's not, that might stay construction, I can't make it out of Alco Texas. And.
Leo Hicks.
And KNO Construction.
So try, well, we're talking about seal bids, asphalt and all that new stuff. If we're able to find, like, for example, coal patch, cheaper than was bid, have anybody on here? Is, are we able to buy it for them rather than off the six month bid?
With the state contracts they allow that, I, I, I think they're, I'm not clear on with our own.
Right.
It may be a rebid type situation, which we could do for just that pinpoint product.
Right, okay.
Keep that with it, will we?
I have to keep that.
KNO Construction sixteen foot board is eighty-nine dollars and sixty, I wanna say that's sixty cents. What do you got, eighty-nine or ninety-nine?
Over, over here, Leo Hicks is eighty-five thirty-seven for sixteen foot board.
Eighteen foot boards, a hundred and thirteen forty.
Ninety-six oh eight.
Twenty foot board, one twenty-nine.
One oh six seventy-three.
Twenty-two foot board is one fifty-four eighty.
One thirty-two. That's tax, I mean, it's a, have it pre-sold by the law.
It, it is, but if I could make a recommendation to table, and, and there's only one reason that I, this is coming up to my head, that Leo Hicks is a vendor that we've not dealt with before, they're out of Texas. I'd like to verify that they did bid that delivered. And if they have a minimum board feet requirement, since they're gonna ship out of Texas.
I agree.
Second.
So we'll table this.
Isn't that where we got our boards at?
No, KNO's.
KNO's we got.
But that's just what popped in my mind, is Texas is quite a little way.
Hey, we take chairs for down there.
Or is that supposed to be us driving down and picking them up?
Yeah, I agree.
We can get that man to go get those for us, right?
Chairman, I don't have anything for thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Thirty-nine, consideration possible action approved in following permanent road crossing permits. On natural gas.
All one percent. And a more undersized.
I entertain a motion before I sign all of you.
I'll second. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve. Crossing permits.
I mean, I'll say aye, but like I said, they're missing one, it looks like.
Now, first season. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Is it one we've done previously, or is it one that came in that just didn't make this agenda?
Maybe we're not gonna.
Honestly could not tell you, I'm not looking at them, so I don't know.
The thing of it is, whether or not that one's here, your, your action is on these that are.
That's correct. We can go ahead and do that, I think. They told me that we're gonna do dogs, but I was going, yeah, you're gonna do dogs. I'm gonna verify that, and then, like I said, they didn't turn one in for Simmons, but, you know, we're not charging them anything anyway, so.
Maybe they're not gonna do Simmons.
Well, only if they wanna connect a pipe are they gonna do Simmons. If they don't need a connected pipe, they won't.
There you go. So, did you, Norman made a motion?
I did, yes.
Next session, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Forty, consideration possible action approved in following temporary road crossing permits. I'll move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That wouldn't be like a ten o'clock game.
We can.
No, it's a doggone city, man. I gotta, I gotta, I have to give the sheriff a whisper.
Ten fourteen?
I'd punch a handcuffs to do it. Hey, if that's all it takes. I've been running first class a long time.
Get past me while I'm doing something.
I don't have any of those.
You got the secret handshake and all that?
Ever since you did that, we've crammed that down there. I know the feeling. I know the feeling.
Might have been side of us. Well, she just want two signatures on it.
She landed it. Two's all that you still...
This is for the water crossing.
It's fine, either way.
Forty-one, consideration possible action on consent agenda items.
Transfers.
Gotta need to go. Need to run.
Report.
Please kiss the call. Is the call...
I just signed the Aramark Mills deal for the sheriff's. Got allergic to it, right?
Kind of sneeze.
Well, give you some samples, you can go and try it.
No thanks.
It's not bad. I haven't tasted it yet.
See, in the, in the army, there's these task conditions and standards, right? The task would be to taste it. The conditions would be in a jail cell, locked to the, you know, I, I'm not up for the conditions, thanks though.
I didn't notice.
Could you mention it to that young man at the jail about paint memorial for our collection board?
Oh, I have. I know you haven't seen him since. We'll get that. Or maybe I did in front of him, because Paul's been out painting rounds too, but we'll get him.
Oh, it's me.
That guy just walked by and seen him? You just don't, they tend to be...
She's focused on you guys. You're trying to...
Someone needs to be...
I thought you was trying to get slapped or something.
I've seen that guy here before. I didn't know, he worked here or...
I think he does.
He just signed his check.
He did.
Avoided that one. I have to admit that I was busy yesterday and didn't have time to come in and do the actual signing on the checks, and Troy said that she would fill in for me, so I do appreciate it.
That concludes consent.
Move, we approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Forty-two, consideration possible action on proven claims for payment from June seventeen. C E five.
You stole it.
C E five, chairman. It's kind of nice, right? It really doesn't all happen. Logan County would be right down there. The only Logan County even down there was for that, for the cash, cash money that we just got.
That's fair.
Why, just threw you out, man.
Yeah, one more. Be real compliance.
Is it in Santa?
Did I sign?
I guess you did.
Was that before?
Invoice before?
Is it? This is money invoice, I guess.
Now, he went down and did this, got the filters on the safe, didn't cover the money till the seventh. That's why.
Got you. Thanks. I have to get coordinated with them.
Troy, I can, I could understand why we would be out of compliance if we go over on one, but under?
That's probably not the reason. What's the tag to your right, the yellow sticky stick?
Oh, nevermind. You're right.
No, you're dead. Just sign it.
Just sign it, show that.
Now this one just...
Oh, the one that says District three.
Couldn't have that been mine.
No. That one? Oh, it's shares.
Most secretaries.
Probably can force it off. I'll make a motion, we approve the claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Forty-three, any citizens there to be heard? Forty-four, comments, questions by board?
Clearing in a couple of things. Um, number one is, uh, our traffic signals are working down there at I thirty-five in Waterloo, so that has really done a number on that traffic stacking up on the highway. And the only other item is, we had the crossings for that O N G, so that line is going from Waterloo at Midwest to Midwest, cross Turo to the new school. And that ought to be entered.
And when you say our traffic signals, are they yours?
Well, it's everybody's, it's citizens. But no, we're not paying for a dime of it.
Not a dime, or maintaining or anything.
This is three Oklahoma county.
I thirty-five is O dot.
I just wanted to clear that up, that they're actually not ours.
But, yeah, it's not a cost to taxpayers of Logan County a dime for that. Good price.
Anything else? Forty-five, consideration possible action on German.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.